Amen. It's so good to see each of you tonight. I'm glad you made it back to this meeting. Revival in our lifetime means that we are going to be more excited and more happy than we have been. Okay? Now, sometimes we go like this as Christians. We're up and down. Sometimes we're happy in the Lord, sometimes we're miserable. But, we come to that place where we say, "Lord, I really need you to help me to have victory over my own problems." Does anybody here have any problems?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I want to tell you what you have. You really have opportunity to change those problems. And turn those problems over to the Lord and let Him handle them.
Amen.
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 I don't, I don't think we should be going around, "Oh, I'm a burden Christian. Nobody loves me. Everybody hates me. Guess I'll go eat worms."
Amen.
No, no, no. The Christian life is to be absolutely exciting. And you know what really makes the Christian life exciting is when you let God take the reins. And you let God do the driving. And you let God share with you what He wants you to do instead, instead of what you think you should do. And that brings me to my message tonight. I'd like you to take your Bibles and I'd like you to go to John 10. The book of John, chapter 10, verse 10 and 11. John, chapter 10, verses 9 and 10. I want to speak on the subject this evening. I do want you to take notes. If you, if it's, if you are able to write down the main points of the message, I'd like you to do that. For, for, for one reason. It'll help me to remember what I preach long after I'm gone. And you could go back and study through that message if you write down the point and the verse. You've gotta have the point and you've gotta have the verse.
Amen.
The title of my message is "Seven Steps to a Surrendered Life."
Amen.
Seven steps to a surrendered life. Now, this is a brand-new message for me. And it's a message that will help you to take the right steps in your life. To have a surrendered life. Now, some people don't like the word surrender. Because that word, I'm gonna define the word for you. You could write this down if you want. The word surrender means to giving up. Now, you'd think that'd be something we shouldn't do is give up. It's giving up or handing over. Our sister here, we were talking before the service and we were talking about handing things over to the Lord, right? Here's another definition. It's a matter of giving up and handing over your person, who you are. Are you listening? Who you are. Giving up and handing over your rights, your rights. What you think you deserve. Okay? And then, giving over your possession. That which you possess. Now, that doesn't sound like any fun to me. I mean, that, that sounds like a really difficult life. To give, to give up and to give over. But this is what God desires of us in John 10:10, verse 9. Look at it with me. The Bible says, "I am the what?"
Door.
"I'm the door. By me, if any man enter in," and we would know that would mean women as well, "he shall have, he, he, he or she shall be what?"
Saved.
Saved. "And shall go in and out and find pasture." All right? There's a door. Jesus is the true door. He's the only door. And when you come into His family through salvation, by faith, repenting of your sin and asking Jesus Christ to save you, you go in and out and you find pasture. Pasture means, every animal loves pasture. It's called substance, sustenance. What it means is that you can eat and grow in the Lord.
Amen.
We ought to all be growing Christians. So that's, that's getting into the very first thing, that is being sure that you are saved. Now, I'm gonna tell you something. There are some people that go to church and they're not saved. They have or have been saved. They may never get saved, but they'll still go to church. So, going to church doesn't save you like baptism doesn't save you.
That's right.
I can sit in the garage of my home
And never be a Ford.
And never be a car. Right?
That's right.
Correct? You can say, "Well, I, I go to church, so I'm a Christian," or "I've been baptized, so I'm a Christian." No, no. Works don't save us. The Bible says, "For by grace are you saved," through what? Faith. "And then not of yourselves," it's the gift of God. "Not of works, lest any man should boast." So, so Jesus saved me, a sinner, lost. But He saved me that I might live for Him, serve Him, and please Him. Number one. Now, these are steps you take. There's only seven of them that I'm gonna give you tonight. Every step in your life is important. We totally take for granted our ability to walk. We get up and move around, no big deal. But did you know a lot of Christians never grow up? They never start walking with God. They never start living for God. You know people like this. We've all been like that at some time in our life, where we got discouraged, somebody let us down, uh, circumstances were bad, and so we stopped really walking with God and taking steps toward God. Where are you taking steps if you're not taking steps toward God? You're going in the opposite direction. How many of you know Christians that have messed up their life? Every one of us knows somebody. Everybody here could name somebody that you know that used to be living for God, but they're not. They stopped taking steps toward God. Number one. I want you to write this down. Number one, the first step is a regenerated life. Now, if we were to, let's say the electricity went off here and this church had a generator. Okay? Electricity goes off, so there's no electricity coming into this building. But the pastor goes over and he pushes a button and all of a sudden the generator comes on and the lights have become re-generated. All of a sudden now, it's as though we have power. Well, we do have power in the generator. The national grid or whatever has shut down for a, somebody hit a telephone pole or something, and so it's out. Now, the regenerated life is a life that was once dead, but is now alive.
Amen.
The Bible says we were born, we were born in iniquity. We were born sinners. We were dead in trespasses and sin. We were not alive at all. We were dead. And but, when we accepted Jesus Christ, we were re-generated. We received life. We were saved. We were redeemed by the power of God. That is the very first step for every human being to make. I'd rather be regenerated than be a church member.
Amen.
I'd rather be regenerated than know, be on the shadow of doubt that I am saved. I am born again. That is more important than anything else in the world. It's more important than having a nice home, nice vehicles, all the toys you would want, your bucket list and all that stuff you want to do in your lifetime. That's nothing compared to being saved.
Amen.
And whosoever shall call upon the name of the Lord shall be
Saved.
Saved. Are you saved?
Yeah.
If I were to start with my wife, tell me how you got saved in, in, in like three sentences.
The pastor's wife thought he told the Lord, she told me that I was a sinner. I needed salvation and you know, I asked the, asked the Lord to save me and changed, changed my life.
How old were you?
Twenty-four.
Okay, and you were lost. You knew it. And that lady lived in such a way that you saw you were not saved. And you wanted what she had. How many of you got saved because you understood that someone else was praying for you or showed you how to be saved? How many of you had someone lead you to Christ? Okay, that's very good. How many of you got saved on your own? Sometimes that's what happens too. Good, okay. But you must be regenerated. You were dead in trespasses and sin. And the blood of Jesus Christ, God's Son, cleansed you from all sins when you got saved. And He put, put within you spiritual life. You are now alive in Christ.
Amen.
You're saved. You're born again. You're a new creature in Jesus Christ. Old things are passed away. Behold, all things have become new. How do you like that new life?
Amen.
Is it worth it?
Amen.
Does it satisfy you? That you've taken the first step? I'm telling you, there are people that say they're saved and they're not. They're gonna be shocked one day when they stand before God at the judge, uh, Great White Throne Judgment of the lost, and they're gonna have to, they're, they're gonna have to be told by the Lord, "I never knew you." Can you imagine thinking you know Jesus as your Savior, but you really don't? That's gonna be shocking. They're gonna get mad. Some of them are gonna say, "Hey, Lord, we've done many wonderful works in Thy name," the Bible says. And He's gonna say, "I never knew you." Your name was never written in the Lamb's book of life. You better know where you got saved and when you got saved. I was in a rocking chair, sitting in our living room, in a cottage on Round Lake in Sonora, New York. I was fourteen years old in nineteen seventy, and I got saved in that rocking chair. You know why? My dad said, "Daniel, I've never seen any indication that you're saved," and that was the day that I made sure that I was saved.
Amen.
You ought to be able to give your testimony in just a couple of moments.
Amen.
Amen. You ought to do that sometime. Have a service where everybody gives their testimony.
Amen.
Wouldn't that be cool?
Amen.
Say, "I don't speak in public." Well, you could, you could write it down. You could write your testimony down and just read it. Wouldn't that be cool? You could do that too. Number two, let's take a second step. You know, there's something neat about taking a second step. The second step that we must take as believers is we must have full assurance of eternal life.
Amen.
This is very, very important because some people think they can lose their salvation. "Well, what if I do something bad, Brother Nickabacher? Will I go to hell?" No, because your salvation, God saved you and you're in the palm of His hand. No man can pluck you out of the Father's hand. There are people, there are churches that believe you can lose your salvation. Here's the problem I have with that doctrine. I wouldn't know when I was saved or not. Because as soon as I do something wrong, I lose my salvation. And then I have to pray and get saved again. Well, what if I did something wrong and didn't get it right with God? And then I thought I was still saved, but I wasn't? That would be so confusing to me. Wouldn't that be confusing to me? The Lord doesn't say He's gonna give you eternal life and then take it away from you. That's not eternal life if He takes it away from you. It's a short-lived life, isn't it? So, when you got saved, He said, "I'm saving you forever, for eternity." You're going to receive everlasting life. So, our salvation does not depend upon us. It depends upon Him.
Amen.
He's the one that saved us. Go with me to 1 John 5. It's very clear here in 1 John, chapter 5. I want to take you to verse 9. Chapter 5 of 1 John, right by Revelation, at the end of your Bible in 1 John 5. Let's take a look at that and go to, begin in verse 9. "If we receive the witness of men, the witness of God is greater. For this is the witness of God, which He hath testified of His Son. He that believeth on the Son of God hath the witness in Himself." That means that if I've received the Lord Jesus, if I've believed on the Lord Jesus Christ, the witness is in my life. I now share my faith with others because I have received salvation. Do you see that there? It's a witness of myself. I'm witnessing of my salvation. How many of you ever told anybody how you got saved or told somebody how to be saved? Sure. Why'd you do that? Because you're excited about it. And so He's saying that if I saved you, you are going to be a witness in yourself, of yourself. Telling someone about, Lord, let us move on. It says, "He that believeth on the Son of God hath the witness in Himself. He that believeth not God hath made him a liar, because he believeth not the record that God gave his Son." And this is the record that God hath given to us, what?
Eternal life.
Eternal what?
Life.
Life! And this life is in who?
His Son.
It's in His Son?
Yes.
I thought the Christian life was in me. Oh, okay, so who's controlling and holding my salvation?
Jesus.
Jesus is, not me. Isn't that neat? God's never made a mistake.
Amen.
So, there's no way He could lose my salvation. Right? You say, "Yeah, but what if He does something really bad?" Well, either he wasn't really saved to begin with, or he got away from God and, and God's going to judge him, but he still has been saved. Now, watch this. "He that hath the Son hath life, and he that hath not the Son shall not see life." Of God hath not life. These things have I written unto you that believe on the name of the Son of God, that ye may know that you have eternal life. Not a hope-so or a guess-so, but a know-so salvation. And that ye may believe on the name of the Son of God." And here's the verse. And this is the confidence that we have in Him, that if we ask anything according to His will, He heareth us. How many of you believe the Lord wanted you to be saved?
Amen.
It's God's will that none should perish, but that all should come to repentance. So, we find that the confidence is in Him and we never have to worry about our salvation. You know, we need to worry about living the Christian life. We need to take much concern in living the Christian life. You know what helps me to live the Christian life? I know that I'm His forever.
Amen.
And I know that I'm not perfect. I'm gonna make mistakes, but I know how to ask the Lord to forgive me. And it's the Holy Spirit that lives in you that helps you to keep, keep your sins confessed. It's the assurance. I'm sure that I'm sure that I'm sure, that God's Word is sure.
Amen.
Listen, if God is, if God's lying to me, if God's lying to me, that's His problem, not mine. But God doesn't lie.
Amen.
The Bible says, "God is not a man that he should lie, neither the Son of Man that he should repent. Had he said it, and shall he not do it? Had he spoken it, and shall he not make it good?"
Amen.
You have the guarantee that once you've been redeemed, you have the assurance of your salvation.
Amen.
Now, if there's a question in your mind as to whether you're really saved, then you need to get it taken care of before you leave tonight.
Amen.
So that you know that you're ready to meet the Lord. He could come tonight. What would you think tonight if at about eleven-thirty, the trumpet sounded and Jesus came back for all of us and raptured us all? How many are ready for the rapture? I'm looking forward to it. Amen? I have no problem with going to heaven.
Amen.
'Cause I know I'm not going to hell. Number three, step number three. Are you with me?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got the regenerated life. That's the salvation life in John, chapter 3, verses 14 to 17. We have the assurance, the step of assurance of salvation, the assurance life in 1 John 5:9 to 13. Then I want you to go to the third step. The third step is a consecrated life. A consecrated life. You say, "Boy, that's a big word. What in the world does that mean?"
I think I spelled it out right.
You've got it. You've got it. Let's go to Romans, chapter 12.
Amen.
Romans, chapter 12. Now, this is very important because many people are just happy with knowing that they're forever saved.
Yeah.
But there's more to the Christian life than just getting regenerated. There's more to the Christian life than having assurance of our salvation. Those are two things. Those are major things that need to be sure in your life. Once those two things happen, then we move to the next step of a life of consecration. The word consecration has the, it has the connotation of surrender. Consecrate. I give my life as an offering to my God. Okay? When the Israelites would, would, uh, give a lamb that was to cleanse them from their sin, remember? They had to make a sacrifice for the atonement of sin. Jesus was our atonement.
Amen.
Now, consecration is, it means we're giving ourselves to God for Him to do with us as He wants. Okay, now, I'm gonna read the verses to you, and then I'm going to share with you something that's very, very important. "I beseech you therefore, brethren, by the mercies of God, that you present your what?"
Bodies.
Your body. Is this my body? My body. It says that you are to present your body a living sacrifice. That's not a dead sacrifice. It's a live sacrifice. Because we're gonna put our lives on the altar as a sacrifice to God. Okay? My dad used to make this statement, and I, I always remembered it because I thought about it. He said, "I don't know how many times I've laid my life on the altar, but then I crawled off." How many understand that? "I know I'm saved. I know I've given my life to Jesus Christ, but I want to do what God wants me to do." I've had people tell me, "God called me to preach, but I, I said, 'No.'" Is that a consecrated life? That's a life with conditions. I'm not going to do that, Lord. Moses tried to do that, didn't he? And we talked about that five times, trying to get out of going to Egypt to deliver the Israelites out of the Egyptian bondage, but God got him to go. And what I'm saying to you is that when you have a consecrated life, you are now under His control, not your own. How many times have you not wanted to come to church? Would you raise your hand? Come on now. Hey, pastor, put your hand up. Don't give me that. Hey, even a pastor doesn't want to come to church. How many believe that? I believe it, 'cause I was, I am a preacher. There's times I get tuckered out. I'm in a meeting. We were in a meeting last week, Sunday through Friday, jumped on a plane Saturday, came here to do a Sunday through Wednesday. We jump on a plane, well, next, uh, in another week or so, 'cause I'm gonna be in another church from Saturday to, to Wednesday, and we're going, going, going. There are times I get weary. How many of you have ever come to church because you had, you were consecrated and you got here? You were tired, you were worn out? And then, when you left, you were all happy that you went?
Amen.
Isn't that amazing? What is God doing? God's rewarding you for your consecration. He's rewarding for you to doing what you didn't want to do in the flesh, but you did it in the spirit. And then God blessed you for it. Now, how many of you know of people that have consecrated themselves to bad habits? Anybody know anybody like that? Have you ever met anybody that has fallen for the get-rich scheme, the quick gambling scheme? Ever know anybody's done that? And they get hooked on it. I was talking with a pastor who used to work for the casinos in, in, um, in Atlantic City, New Jersey, before he got saved. He said people were so committed to this that they would even re-mortgage their homes to be able to, to keep gambling. There were people that were gambling so much that they wouldn't take the time to go to the bathroom and they wet themselves. He said, "You would not believe the horrible things that people do in casinos." Now, they're consecrated themselves to do that, didn't they? They said, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna give myself over to gambling. I'm gonna give myself over to drugs." I've never seen a drug addict, drug addict on the streets of, of Ben Bellingham. Have you ever seen that? Somebody walking down the street like this? I've seen it. I've seen people laying on the ground drunk, out of their mind. They consecrated themselves to evil, didn't they? Of course they did. Now, how about greed? Have you ever seen that program on TV, "American Greed"? How many ever watched a whole episode of "American Greed"? It's unreal. What people do, they get into a get-rich scheme and they start ripping people off. And a lot of it has to do with insure, insurance, all these different kinds of things, investments. And then they take all that money and they spend it on themselves, and they never, they never, uh, uh, really grow their money for them, and they send them statements that their money's growing, but it's not. It's called greed. People have committed their lives. They consecrated themselves to rip people off. What was that guy's name? Madoff?
Yeah, Bernie.
Yeah, he made off with everybody's money. What a name. What a wicked man. But he was committed to it. And then we're asked to commit ourselves to Christ and we can't do it? I mean, if we can't make the basic services of our church, what's wrong with us? If I can't tell somebody about Jesus, what's wrong with me? A consecrated life means, I'm in it. I'm in it to serve the Lord with all my heart because I'm happier when I'm serving the Lord than I'm serving myself. We know that to be true, don't we? Oh, why not live for Christ? Instead of living for self. Self is so cheap. But when you live for Christ, it's a rich life. Because you receive the joy of serving God. The Bible makes it clear that we've got to lay our lives on the altar. Consecration is laying yourself on God's altar, recognizing His ownership in your life. He has taken the reins of your life. We begin to memorize Scripture if we can. We, we make a prayer list. We pray for people. We invite people to church. We commit ourselves to serving God. And whatever God wants, we're all for it. Did you know God would not call you unless He could enable you to do it?
Amen.
I think you, everybody ought to serve the Lord in the church. I'm glad Jared is here tonight, 'cause last night Pastor had to, had to take up the offering. I'm glad you were here to, tonight, Perry. You, you really served a purpose. Amen? Every one of you can serve the Lord.
Amen.
Amen.
And go to your pastor and say, Pastor, put me to work, give me something to do to serve the Lord. He'll do that. Then he won't have to do everything. Amen.
Amen.
That's, that's what consecration is. Lord, use me. Lord, use me. All right, now say, the fourth step. You ready? The fourth step is the spirit-controlled life.
Amen.
Now, there's, this is where the battle rages between the spirit and the flesh. There's a constant fighting. The spirit wants us to do God's will, our flesh does not want to do God's will. And so there's a there's a battle. And it deals with the subject of who is in control? Who's in control? Now, your pastor was driving today and scared the living daylights on him. And I thought we were gonna rear end a tractor trailer. And, uh, you know why I was so nervous? Cuz I, I wasn't controlling that vehicle. How many ever had that happen? And my wife was thrilled that that happened today because sometimes my driving causes her to feel about me like I felt about him. How many understand that? Isn't it amazing when you're not in, behind the wheel, it's, it's a little nerve wracking? Because you are not in control. Now, how about sin?
Yeah.
Doesn't sin tempt you? And the Bible says, God, God cannot be tempted of evil, evil, neither tempted he any man. But every man is drawn away of his own lust and entice. So I can be walking in the spirit of God, the, the spirit's got me under control, and then a temptation comes. Oh no, what am I gonna do? Well, as Horatio Palmer said, yield not to temptation, for yielding is sin.
Amen.
And we must ask the Lord to help us to say, no! N-O to sin. Not gonna do it.
Amen.
That's control. Who can control you? God ought to be able to control you.
Amen.
Did you know some people, other people control your life? My wife is married to me. And I don't really try to be ugly to her and control, I'm not over, am I over controlling? She, I'm not, are you just saying that cuz I told you not to be for this? No, I, I believe that she's a human being. I love her and she's been a blessing to me. And why would I mistreat her in any way? No, I'm not gonna do that. In fact, she's more precious to me. When you think about all the things she's done for me, how could I not be wonderful to her? You understand that? Now, controlling my tongue is difficult sometimes. Now, I don't cuss and swear. But have you ever said a sharp word to somebody? Or you got disgusted and rolled your eyes like a kid does when his parents tell him what to do? Sometimes God, we treat God that way. God says, I want you to witness to that person. Aw, man, why do I have to do that? You see what happened? You went from being controlled by the Lord to saying no to the Lord. So your life has to come under God's control. And when you, how many of you have ever made a mistake? How many have ever, how many of you have ever made a mistake twice? Well, the second time you made it, it was not a mistake, it was a choice. Have I said no to the Lord when I should've said yes? Have I said no to the devil when he wanted me to say yes? Yes. I like to beat the devil out. Amen?
Amen.
The Bible says, resist the devil and he will flee from you. We must bring our lives under God's control. If the Bible says, and be not drunk with wine where it is excess, but be filled with the spirit. Here's what happens to happen. You must empty out yourself, empty self out that the spirit might take control. If the spirit is in control, I am not. He is. So when a temptation comes, you know what a neat thing to do is to say, um, let's say a temptation comes to you that you should do something that you shouldn't, or think something that you shouldn't. I like to say, let me check with the spirit. What does the spirit say? And I don't even have to pray about it. You know, there are some things you don't have to pray about. Because your spirit will tell you, the spirit of God will tell you, don't do it. How many of you know when the spirit tells you not to do something? Okay, so whenever that happens, just say, just say, the spirit said, no, I'm not doing it. The spirit said, no, I'm not doing it. Say it. The spirit said, no, I'm not doing it. That's you under the control of the spirit. Did you know you can't even take any credit for that?
That's right.
Because it's the spirit that gives us the power to say no. It also gives us the power to say yes.
That's right.
Amen. You know what happens in churches? People come to that place in their life where they hit that fourth step and they say, I wanna be under God's control. And the Holy Spirit will say to them, I want you to be a missionary. Me? Yes, you. And you'll, you'll find a missionary come out of their scene and come to the altar. And they'll surrender to be a missionary. I know a girl right now, lady, she's a lady, her husband died. She's probably in her late fifties. Her husband was six, eight, police officer in Texas. He died suddenly. And she goes, what am I gonna do with my life? He was my reason for living, really. And boy, it was hard for her. He was a nice guy. You know where she is right now? She's a missionary in Mexico.
Amen.
Serving the Lord. She thought she couldn't do it. Now she's learning the language. And she's reaching kids and people for Christ. If you told her the day her hubby died that you'd be a missionary in Mexico, she'd have told you, you're nuts. Maybe ten years ago, if I said to you that you'd be in a church on a Tuesday night for revival, you'd have said, you're crazy. But Jesus saved you. And look how he's developed your Christian life to where now you enjoy spiritual things.
Amen.
You can hardly wait. What's God gonna talk to me about now? As you grow in the Lord, he can use you more than he could before. And so the spirit-controlled life is very important. Let's go to number five, step number five. Everybody good? Step number five is fruit-bearing. Fruit-bearing, and that's in Matthew seven. Would you turn with me to Matthew seven very quickly, the verse eighteen? Seven, verse eighteen of Matthew. Here we go. A good tree cannot bring forth evil fruit. That's right. A good tree cannot bring forth evil fruit, neither can a corrupt tree bring forth good fruit. Every tree that bringeth not forth good fruit is what?
Hummed.
It's hummed down or cut down and cast into the fire. Wherefore by their fruits ye shall what?
Know them.
Know them. Wow. By their fruits ye shall know them. So what would fruit be? Faithfulness to church would be a fruit. You're, you're showing that God is working in your life. You can be faithful to the church services. Reading your Bible every day is a fruit. Telling others about Jesus is a fruit. Doing something in the church is a fruit. I miss Gary tonight. His, his, his ministry in music is amazing, it's wonderful. And I miss him tonight because that's his fruit. I'm gonna ask you a question, what fruit do you have? You pick people up for church, Jerry? That's a fruit. Amen. You take people home, that's a fruit. Mrs. Pastor's wife, Chris? You haul people around, that's fruit that abounds to your account. How many of you are grateful for that?
Amen.
Of course. Isn't it wonderful that somebody brought you? Uh, you helped somebody with a need that they have, that's fruit. Amen. How many have ever helped somebody and bought them groceries? Yeah. Or you helped them with a bill or something, or you did something to encourage them. That's fruit. Telling others about Jesus is fruitful. Giving tithes and offerings. I think you ought to give your tithes and offerings to the Lord. Why? Because God will bless your giving, because you're not giving it to the pastor, you're giving it to the Lord. I believe this church is the Lord's church.
Amen.
Is this a sacred place? Get this. You want, you want fruit? Come to the altar and pray. That's fruit. Most people don't ever use the altar in a church.
That's right.
And shame on us if we don't.
That's right.
Because that's a place where we come and humble ourselves and pray and seek his face and turn from any wicked way. And then God will hear from heaven and he'll start blessing us, amen, and he'll heal our land. I think that, I think fruitful Christian living is keeping a prayer journal where you record your answers to prayer, to where you could go back and say, last year I had this many answers to prayer. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's all about fruitfulness. The Bible says in Mark four twenty, bring forth fruit. Luke six forty-three, bring forth good fruit. John fifteen two, bring forth more fruit. Increase your service to the Lord. And of course, by their fruits ye shall know them. I love it when a person comes to church all happy before they get there. Now, I like them to leave happy. Some have come forward and gotten saved and left happy. They came to miserable, but they left happy because they got saved. Isn't that beautiful?
Amen.
So fruit-bearing is very important. Then number
Six.
Six. The sixth step is the victorious life.
Amen.
The victorious life. And I wanna tell you, if you're gonna have a victorious life, you can't be living in the past. You can't be complaining all the time. Go with me to Romans chapter seven, verse eight. Romans chapter seven. And verse eight. In chapter seven, I don't have time to do it tonight, but I want you to study chapter seven and eight to understand what the victorious Christian life is all about. And I'm gonna tell you, in chapter seven, look with me at verses fifteen and following. And that which I do, I allow not, for what I would, that do I not, but what I hate, that do I. Have you ever had that problem? Of course, all of us have. If then I do that which is, that I would not, I consent unto the law that it's good. Now then, it is no more I that do it, but sin that dwelleth in me. Watch this. For I know that in me, that is in my flesh, dwelleth no good thing, for too will is present with me, but how to perform that which is good, I find not. For the good that I would, I do not, but the evil which I would not, that I do. Now, if I do that I would not, it is no more I that do it, but sin that dwelleth in me. I find then a law, that when I would do good, evil is present with me, for I delight in the law of God after the inward man. But I see another law in my members warring against the law of my mind and bringing me into captivity to the law of sin, which is in thy members. Now, what does he say after all that? He goes, man, I have been blowing it. The struggle in my life, I'm losing out. The things that I should do, I don't. The things that I'm not supposed to do, those are the things I find myself doing. Look what he says in verse twenty-four, oh, wretched man that I am, who shall deliver me from the body of this death? Look at verse twenty-five. Here it is. Hold on to this verse. I thank God through Jesus Christ our Lord, so then with the mind I myself serve the law of God, but with the flesh, the law of sin. If you wanna serve the law of God, you are going to have a victorious. I said victorious. Christian.
Amen. Amen.
I'm gonna do what's right. I'm gonna stop sinning. Those sins I'm battling with, I'm sick of them. And I'm trading them in for victory. Did you know, Christian, you can go from one victory to another? You can go victory, 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 victory. But many Christians, they go victory, failure, failure. Victory, failure, failure. And you know what happens to some people? Listen closely. Some people give up on the Christian life because they think they can't do it. Well, I'm gonna let you in on a secret. I can't do it. That's why I got saved. So he can do it. Casting all your care upon him, for he careth for you.
Amen.
Whatever you're doing you shouldn't be doing, you say, I'm not gonna do it. Victory. I'm going to do what God wants me to do. Victory. I'm not gonna do what my friends want me to do. Victory. You see what I'm saying? So God, the Holy Spirit helps you and intercedes for you and guides you so that you can have a victorious Christian life. You're no longer pouting and complaining all the time. I went to preach for a preacher and he, um, he was very negative about everything. And it wasn't just one time, but the next time I went to preach for him, he did the same thing. Next time he did the same thing. Told me the same old stories. I got sick of it. I get sick of stories of defeat. It defeats me. Have you ever been defeated by somebody that's defeated? Come on. You ever get defeated by somebody that's defeated? They won't give victory. So I told him, I said, I'm quitting the ministry. He said, what? I said, I'm quitting the ministry. He goes, why would you wanna do that? I said, I'm sick and tired of you complaining all the time. Was I really gonna quit? No, I was trying to stop him from quitting.
Amen.
Did you hear me? Did you know something? When you are always pulling at the past and the junk of the past and the problems of the past and the bitternesses of the past, you're shocked. How can God use you? Forgetting those things which are behind, reaching out to those things that are before. Let's talk about souls getting saved.
Amen.
Let's talk about people having victory over, over drugs, victory over whatever it may be, laziness or, 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 or not being responsible to the commandments that God has given to us. Listen. We must come to that place where we are living a victorious Christian life. You know what Jesus called it? He called it the abundant life. I'm so happy I can hardly stand it. What's wrong with you? What's wrong with you? Well, I'm happy when you're depressed. I've said that to people. When you're discouraged, you should be happy. It's all depends on what you do with that decision that comes to you. Come on now. Do you understand that? How many understand what I'm talking about? So don't bring up the past and the garbage of the past. Forget it. How many believe Jesus forgave it?
Amen.
And he said, he buried it in the depths of the deepest sea, never to be remembered anymore. As far as the east is from the west, so far hath he removed our transgressions from us. Get over it. Amen?
Amen.
That's what we must do. Now, what's gonna happen when you get over it? Well, it doesn't cloud your path, cloud your future. It doesn't cloud your future. The, the sky is as bright as the promises of God are. There's no fog. There's no precipitation. It's glory to walk with the Lord.
Amen.
And that's what we should be living in. What's God gonna do tomorrow night? What's God gonna do on Sunday? What's God gonna do in the next 30 days in your life? Are you gonna have victory or defeat? Let's go. Victory?
Yes. Victory. Victory. Victory.
Now, the devil wants to defeat you. All you've got to do is resist the devil and he'll flee from you, he'll take off. He'll get away from you because he says, I can't get him to sin. Boy, if you could get the devil on the run, you have really discovered what the victorious life is. Alright, I gotta close. Number seven step. Heart resting. The heart resting life.
Amen.
Now, let's go to Matthew 11 and I'm gonna close.
Amen.
Matthew chapter 11, I want you to look at verse 28. This is Jesus speaking, and when Jesus speaks, you can believe it. And this will fit into every circumstance of your life. Here it is, you ready? Come unto me, all ye that labor and are heavy-laden, and I will give you what?
Rest.
I'll give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn of me, for I am meek and lowly in heart, and ye shall find
Rest.
unto your souls. For my yoke is easy, and my burden is light. Alright, now, I'm gonna teach you a principle that I have learned. Okay? There are many Christian, I was preaching a message in Texas about the Christian life being easy. Are you listening? The Christian life, I told the people, the Christian life is easy. Don't forget that, okay? Alright? And the Bible says that the way of a transgressor is what?
Hard.
Hard.
Okay, so let's go over that again real quick. The Christian life is
Easy.
Easy. And the transgressor's life is what?
Hard.
Okay, now, either God's true and we're wrong. That's the case. If God is true, and we don't believe what he said, we're wrong. So, I had some man get mad at me. This man said to me, he came up to me after the service, he said, have you, you said the Christian life is easy. Why don't you read, have you ever read Fox's Book of Martyrs? I said, I have. He goes, I'm gonna bring a copy for you to read. I just told him I'd already read Fox's Book of Martyrs. But he said, I'm bringing you Fox's book, I want you to read that, and I want you to tell me that all those all those martyrs were, that their life was easy. I said, okay. So, he brought the book the next night and I took it home and I literally read the next day before the next service. I was preaching Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the next service, I read that book. I was looking for places to find out where the Christian life was so hard. They were told to recant. Here's what they said to them, if you'll just denounce your faith, we won't kill you. We won't burn you to the stake. We won't cut your tongue off. We'll let you go home to your family. We won't throw you into prison. They said, I'm not recanting. What they were doing is when they were saying that I have just allowed a death sentence to be put on me. Now, here's what they said. Some of them, as they were burning up, as they were burning at the stake, they were praising the Lord. That they were counted worthy to suffer for his name. They were leading people to Christ. Did you know that many, the work of God grew faster under persecution than it's ever grown?
That's right.
With no persecution.
That's right.
Interesting, isn't that? So, after I got done reading all that, I told the folks, I said, the Christian life is easy.
Amen.
What happened as soon as they died?
They were in heaven.
They were in heaven. Did you know that there was one man that was being crucified, not crucified, but he was being burnt at the stake and the fire, they couldn't get the fire started? They couldn't get a fire started. And you read those stories and you find those people weren't complaining? They weren't complaining. And yet, we got Christians complaining about everything and they're not even gotten to the stake yet. Now, I'm gonna tell you something. Here's the key to my message. Everything I said, the start at the beginning, number one, the regenerating life, the assurance life, the consecrated life, the spirit-controlled life, the fruit-bearing life, the victorious life, the heart-resting life means that if we do things the Lord's way, the Christian life is gonna be easy.
Amen.
You know what we do? We make the Christian life hard. Because we hold grudges. We get offended. We stop serving. And then we become miserable and the way of a transgressor, there are Christian transgressors, and they don't have an easy life. Because they're doing all the wrong things. Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, Lord, you love these people so much that you want them to take the right steps in their Christian life. Oh dear God, help us to fall upon our faces before the Lord and say, Lord, take my life and let it be consecrated, Lord, to thee.